Called the meeting for the Woodbury Select Board to order at 6:01 on Monday, August 12th. And I just wanted to let folks know, or some of the folks have already heard this, we have a really packed agenda tonight, so please don't take offense if I remind everybody before their segment how much time we've dedicated to each one.
I would love everybody to stay.
But I just want us to be as efficient as we can. We have a packed agenda. So the first thing is adjustments to the select board agenda, and I'd like to suggest that we move the 755 item, set property tax rate to just after the delinquent tax collector's report. Is there any objection to that?
No.
Good idea.
Alright, set property tax rate. And then the next item, is there a motion regarding the July 22nd and July 29th meeting minutes?
I'll move if they need approval.
Is there any discussion? Okay, hearing no discussion. All those in favor of approving the minutes from July 22nd and July 29th as written, please say aye.
Aye.
And they're right here somewhere near the sign.
I did too. But are there two, do we have to sign two sets?
There's two.
I only signed one set.
Yeah. Okay, and then public comment for items that are not on the agenda. I think both you gentlemen are here for...
It.
It, exactly.
That's it.
Alright, so the next item moving on is our town clerk's report. Robin?
Mine will be short and sweet. It's election, election, election.
Yeah.
Funds are open from 10 tomorrow until 7 tomorrow night.
At the town hall.
At the town hall. And you will be there tomorrow night? You, Chris?
Yes, I will be there.
Okay.
I wasn't on that list, the schedule. I'm happy to be there.
So 7 o'clock.
At 7. Be there at 7. Yes, I will be there, sure.
That's what I need to, Robin?
You said you'd be there by 4.
I did, but then when you set out the schedule, my name wasn't on it.
Right, but I have to have three people for each one of the sections.
I'm happy to be there.
Okay.
Yeah, I just didn't know.
That's something new this year with the election that happened two years ago. They have to make sure everybody watches everybody and everybody's teeth are crossed in.
Really?
Yep.
I think somebody's trying to get into that.
You have to make sure when they step up to the tabulator that they're putting it in face down.
Okay.
So nobody can see how they marked off their ballot.
Okay.
Well, one of those people are gonna be standing there by the machine, right?
So me being there by 5 is okay?
Yep.
Okay.
It'll be good. Thanks.
And then four? Okay. Did not realize that was tomorrow.
Yeah, it's tomorrow!
Glad you said that.
Alright, that's it?
That's what I got.
Wow, nice job, Robin.
Thanks.
Alright, moving on. Randy's got the town treasurer's report, which we have a copy of in front of us.
Yep, a bunch of stuff happened over the last three days. So, taking in a cash receipt, $19,855.86, which of, that was included in that, school insurance for the fiscal year, we paid it and they reimbursed us. $12,569, delinquency taxes, delinquent taxes I took in, $2,291.88, prepaid taxes, $633. Harcourt Area Community Coalition, they sent us a check of $3,507. They closed, they closed the, they closed the fund. They closed the, so what they did was divide their funds per town and dispersed it that way. So that was kind of a surprise.
Hmm.
Other goodies was recording dog license, etc. Electric, electric transfers that were put into our account, state of Vermont Class 2 and 3 roads, they bumped up three deposits into just one month to make sure towns had money for Class 2 and 3 roads. So $58,920.93. State of Vermont created in just past a fiscal year 24 Budget Adjustment Act. So that now has its own fund. It's Fund 19. It's not grant approved, so you don't have to approve this money, but I do have to track it and make sure I can tell the state exactly what we spent this $30,000 on. So it's in its own fund. I set aside $30,000.
So this is for, this is road funding, funding?
Yes, but it can't double dip into them.
Oh, yeah, that's fine.
So...
Spending on the rail trailer.
Culverts.
That's why, that's why it's in its own fund.
Yeah.
So other things, state of Vermont for property tax adjustments for this current tax revenue, $3,708. Swenson's final fourth quarter gave us $8,166.28. And I have up on the table, on the right-hand side of the bills, right in front of you, Chris, off to the right there. So that's a breakdown of what Swenson gave us for last year's quarters, where it went down. We typically budget for $35,000 in the highway, and we only received 28 last year, which is gonna be another dip down. This year goes the same way.
Is that just because it's depending on how much they pull out of the quarter?
That's what they say.
Yeah. Payroll, $14,695.56. Accounts payable, $67,029.36. Today I transferred $57,000 from the money market over into the checking. Other goodies, other goodies. So any questions on the treasurer's portion?
I don't know what portion.
The treasurer's portion. So moving on to, I'm on the agenda next for going to the tax collector. On the table I have where I chose an attorney.
Oh, yeah.
And there's a packet that is now requesting select board signature. So I cannot choose an attorney without having the backup of the select board for this.
And did, did you get a recommendation from somebody for...
I did, yep. Actually, my attorney suggested that.
Okay.
My attorney for last year's tax sale recommended them out of Arlington.
Because they're not doing it anymore, the one?
He's not doing it anymore.
Correct. So currently I have $62,887.97 still delinquent as of today.
And those are?
As far as wanting names, or?
Oh, I think we will get the names.
I'm not gonna list them all.
Okay.
We have discussed...
But the, but that information is available, right?
Oh, it's probably...
In the town office, right?
Yep.
Okay.
Any, any request, I have to give anybody on the delinquency list.
And then Brandy, I remember from like an earlier meeting you saying that you were disappointed that your, the current attorney that helped you with that wasn't doing it anymore because there was some structure that they had to their billing that was beneficial to us, but I can't...
No, he, he's resigning from doing tax sales.
Right, but I mean...
But, so in that, that piece, he had done them at no expense to the town, yeah, for the tax sale. His fees would come out of the delinquent payer. In this case, that's, doesn't always happen. So right now I have four that are two years behind. If you times that by 15%, they're only gonna be getting roughly $2,000.
The attorney?
Correct.
Yeah.
My policy is you're two years behind with no payment, it's gone. And it's because of having to choose an attorney that's gonna come out of taxpayers' money hypothetically, if they over, if they overdo the work, if the attorney, the new attorney does work that's up and over the 2,000, that's what they're wanting.
The 2,000 would be...
The 15%.
Of all the total, of all the sales?
The four sales that we're going to tax them. Yes. So it's just, they want backup from the town that if they don't, if they dig themselves in a hole of too much work, then the town's gonna, and I don't, that's not a warm fuzzy feeling for me. I don't think any of us should be the brunt of something that wants to be, not pay their taxes. But that's where it's left. No attorneys are doing it now. It's covering their tail.
So what Bill Davies was doing was basically by the law, right? The law that said that they could, could collect a certain percentage, yeah.
15% is the state statute.
The state statute, but the state statute's not keeping up with what the lawyers wanna make, I guess.
Yeah. If they go beyond, they want the backup of that. Or if I resign early, that they have the select board that is backing on it.
Did you inquire about the rates at all? I'm just curious.
I did.
Are they pretty standard? I mean, I don't know how much variance there is across the board between attorney rates.
Um, within $50 of each other.
Okay, so these are in, they're in the mix with all that, and, okay.
So the other change is that when somebody buys a property at a tax sale, you have to keep the money now.
I do. I'll have to have it in an escrow account.
Yeah, that's okay.
Because they have the ability to pay it off within a year?
The old attorney, dealt with that, dealt with the escrow. I didn't hold anything.
Yeah.
Now, like, they're putting it back on. I should just keep track, babysit, until the year's up. All more fun stuff.
So you probably would like a motion from the board to hire Monahan Sahar as...
Pretty please.
...an attorney for the tax sale process.
I did inquire on two others closer, and I did get a price from one, but the other one did not call me back.
So what does the board think?
I would be inclined to vote yes.
Do you have a motion?
We can have a discussion after you make the motion.
Sure. So I thought you just made a motion. I guess I was on top of that. Yeah, I'll make a motion to hire Monahan Sahar.
Monahan Sahar.
Sahar. Sahar. To represent our town in the tax sale proceedings.
Is there any discussion? Hearing no discussion. All those in favor of hiring Monahan Sahar to be our attorney for the tax sale process, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion passes unanimously. Thanks, Brandy.
I have a paper from Ron about Arizona mission certificate for the grant list.
From both, this one.
They added an adjustment to the grant list.
So they need, is this, is this just like information?
I believe it's just your information.
Great. There's no, no action necessary from the board?
Looking for a signature?
It doesn't seem to be. It says, it just says, "Please give to the board." I guess they'll let us know they need something.
Does it need to be filed somewhere?
Give it to Michael. He will put it in the minutes.
Okay.
Okay, owner's change reason, town of, okay.
You want to put this in the minutes?
I guess so.
Okay. Thanks, Michael.
So on the next is fixing the tax rate. So when I started looking into our tax chart that I have, we didn't need to raise, those were red flags to me to be the $190,000 to be raised. And all the money we raised from last year for special grants, yeah, there's no double dipping. So removing $190,000, increasing it by $25,000 for the $15,000 additional culverts and $10,000 on gravel, it brought the new tax rate to .5865. Everybody pause quick.
Yay!
So that is, I'm asking the board for them to approve that.
Compared to last year's municipal tax rate was .71, so it's, it's a good decrease.
Partly there, since the education may be going up. It's not...
Yeah, I just did a real quick calculation, and I, I don't know if it's right, but looks like the homestead with, with the increase in the school would increase by 3.27%, and the non-homestead by 5.68%. I'm not, I won't swear by that, because I don't do well at calculating during a meeting. There's too many other things going on, so. But, yeah.
But this is still the good situation.
Otherwise, the, the non-homestead rate just for the school was gonna go up 16%, and the homestead rate just for the school was gonna go up 12%.
Wanna make a motion?
I'll make a motion to approve the tax rate of 0.5865.
Is there any discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor of approving the tax rate at 0.5865, please say aye.
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 Motion passes unanimously. Thanks again, Brandy. Yeah, nice job.
Good job.
Yeah.
Alright, we're cruising. Mr. Marcusani, thanks for coming.
Thank you.
You're next on the agenda for the plans to upgrade the IT system. Benefits and costs.
This is turning out to be a complex topic with many moving, interchangeable points. So it's trying to, you know, it's a snapshot in time. Two things happened in the last week. On Monday, last week, and today, we had a meeting with RV Technologies to move over their proposal. And in the course of going over the proposal, there were some things that were missing, so then we ended in the back and revised proposals to pull them to us sometime this week. Secondly, the library's PC died.
The what?
Yeah, guess who sold it? That fellow.
And what?
Thank you, Skip.
Guess who sold it? That fellow. Hopefully, they'll be installing backup and running on Wednesday in time for Friday open house.
Yeah, and they've been functioning with their laptop, but it's not ideal.
So, the whole point of investigating RV Technologies is to, one, make the town as hacker-proof as possible. When I say the town, we're talking clerk's office, we're talking the library, we're talking the garage, we're talking the town hall, but there's not much of a risk there. Gotta get them all. So that, that basically is coming under one umbrella. They basically would be installing software and hardware to allow full remote monitoring and management of all the IT resources in the town. So, for example, if Robin thinks she's got a strange email that might be a scam, right now she emails me and says, "This is a scam," but she's pretty good. She gets them unheaded up 99% of the time. That would, the bulk of that would happen when Matt, and it probably happened to C60 this afternoon. Guess what it was?
Hacking.
Ransomware hacking. And they said it is, it is increasing exponentially, expect to get hacked. So we're basically putting in place insurance to try and prevent that, and we're putting in place, we're taking all the knowledge that's in my head, and we're exporting it to a stored medium, so that if something happens to me, the town is not in trouble.
Not all of it, I hope.
Well, still...
Sorry.
It'll still reside in my brain, but on the RV Technologies. If we were to do this, we still need an IT knowledgeable person or people available to the town, because we basically have to be the first line of inquiry before going to RV Technologies if there are issues. For example, the library PC died, I had to buy a new PC. So I worked Thursday, Friday, Saturday, Sunday, and this morning, not full-time, but over five days to get that back to a point where we can bring it back to the library. But it's probably not complete yet, because since it died, I didn't have a software inventory. It was on there, so we have to basically see what's missing. If RV Technologies had been involved, we would have backups that we could resort to, and they could basically recover that. There would be a charge to recover that, okay, but they could...
In addition to the $750 a month?
Yes. All you're, all you're paying for that $750 a month, or 7, whatever, $770, I think, a month is the remote management of the computers. That's the updates, that's the antivirus software, that's the backup and recovery, that's the spam protection, and those go along. So what are we looking at right now? In terms of monthly expenses, and this, again, hopefully we'll have this nailed down in the next month to two months. So we're looking at $770 monthly charges to RV Technologies for their service. We're looking at $75 a month for Microsoft, the Microsoft 365 Office, which is required by RV Technologies. We're looking at $616 a month for CD fiber internet, which I finally got them to commit to prices. Those prices are only $92.42 for a year than what we're currently trading.
A year, brilliant.
To Comcast's and Consolidated Communications for $7.70 a month.
Really?
Now, that's what's been committed to me over the phone. Okay, we'll see what it is in writing when we first come to the show. So the total monthly cost for IT technology is about $1,461.
Wait a minute, $1,461, how's that compared to $750?
$770 for RV Technologies, $75 for Microsoft Office, and the internet services is $616. You're already paying that $616, so to speak.
Oh, okay, so it's not an increase. It's...
Not an increase, but it's what the monthly expense would be, okay? So the one-time cost, a little bit higher than what I thought they would be, is about $6,000 for RV Technologies to come in and physically install all the upgraded hardware for the network in the clerk's office, in the library, and not a lot to do with the garage, not a lot to do with the town hall. But, for example, one of the things that needs to be done, just turn around and open that cabinet door. Look at the mess that's in here. Okay, the top little bit is off, that's the rest of the school. That's a fire hazard. Here's, here's our fire sheet here.
Yeah.
RV Technologies said that's, that's gotta be fixed.
Well, that's the schools, that's not the town.
No, that's the towns.
The top, she said the top section.
On the top, okay.
That's the towns, that's the towns.
Okay.
This is the schools. Supposedly, this stuff is not used.
Oh.
But it cannot be in a closed cabinet with no vents. And the other, and, and this has gotta be either replaced, or it's gotta be a cabinet added here that that stuff can go into. And that's part of what RV Technologies has proposed. The other issue we got, since we have fire TV, is you got an electrical panel there that you can't get it. Okay? See that panel there with the things on it? That's where the electrical panel is. Try opening it. RV Technologies is pulling that money out, too. So somehow that's gotta be resolved, but that's not on the list to do from an IT standpoint. That's gotta be on the list. Okay, so what, what are we talking about for RV Technologies? What are we talking about one-time costs? $6,000 to get all this stuff upgraded. That's basically their time. Okay? There's $6,350 in new network equipment. That's smart, as opposed to the network equipment that we have today that's built.
$6,350?
I have, I have this if you want it. Okay? And then to rewire the, the network in the office, that's to have electric come in and run all new network cabling back to the central point in the basement on that interior south wall. Rough estimate on that is $5,000. And I have got an appointment with Mike Tanner, who's from Tanner Electric on September 9th for an estimate to come in and tell us. And Mike Tanner is given to us by, by RV Technologies, a person that does network rewiring. At the meeting last Monday, Wayne and I were there. Skip Lindsay could not be there. I went in there with about two and a half pages of questions. And every one of those questions were answered in the presentation. They did a very, very thorough job. And for the second time in the meeting, I'm impressed with their knowledge and what they're doing. I think they're, I think they, I think they've got their act together. However, looks to be, Steve, I've asked them for three references when they could turn the updated proposal, pre-references from towns that they are working with. And he said they will do that. Didn't he come to the meeting?
No, one of the things that he mentioned was that municipalities were the greatest, at the greatest risk for hackers, because we've got good insurance, apparently. You've got good insurance for IT issues.
Deep pockets.
And because you've got good insurance, that makes it a great target for people to try and take their insurance money.
Good point. If we were to go with RV Technologies, if we did get hacked, we'd have to hack the town. If we did get hacked, because of the backup scheme in place, you basically say this to the hackers or the hackers, you wipe the systems clean and reload it. You gotta find out how you got hacked. And typically, the way you get hacked, even with all this stuff in place, is somebody unintentionally clicks on the link that they shouldn't have clicked on. What I got out of watching 2020 last night, they were talking about three large corporations that got hacked, and every single one of them was someone that received something, you know, a document, an email, or something, they clicked on it and didn't realize that they shouldn't be clicking on it. And that stuff does sneak in. So that stuff, all that stuff I just gave, that comes out to be about $1,700 in one-time charges. And I asked RV Technology, I said, "Okay, it's gonna take a six months for you to get this stuff done?" They said, "Nope. Soon as we do, we go ahead and order the equipment." And they can actually, even though the network's not in place, they can go replace the dumb equipment in the clerk's office, the small equipment, and you can take them to serve.
We need sheetrock, Joe.
Yes.
Did he talk about...
I need plywood.
Oh, plywood.
We need two 4x8 sheets of plywood and plywood on that south wall.
So no sheetrock on that wall?
No, just plywood.
No, on the other side of the wall that you want the sheetrock on.
Oh, okay.
But there's the roof.
The back, the inside, oh, okay.
The roof needs sheetrock. The backside of that wall where this equipment's gonna go needs plywood, so you can screw and anchor stuff.
Oh, okay, so the sheetrock doesn't have to, okay.
That makes sense.
Skip, you said $1,700. Did you mean $17,000?
I wish I meant $17,000. Thank you. $17,443 as well I have here. But again, this is, you know, it's moving. It's moving.
This is all the... This is all the, just start up.
One-time start-up.
Get us all, get us all up to date.
And that puts us in a position to basically move forward for the next ten, for the next ten years. I'm thinking, worst case, next five years, unless technology takes such a bad change. And it gets you out of the situation where the knowledge is in my head. So if something does happen to me, I'm not asking for something to happen to me. If something does, the town is protected. And Wayne is trying to pick up stuff as fast as you can. He's a limits guy, a hopeless guy, but he still knows recruiters.
He's a little younger than you, maybe. He's a little younger than you, maybe.
I think he's a whole lot younger than you.
And then one of the bigger ones is the security systems that, that just don't retain. Yeah, and they end up quitting on us, the cameras at the office and at the work.
That's not, that's not even on this list, but they gave me the name of a company and I forgot the way they came from up, your ears, something. No, I, I'll get it again. Basically, fix that. It means replacing this thing, basically. A little report, point that I was going to make, but I had in my head.
He was also talking about, Ruben was also talking about, they had a front end for spam to eliminate those from even coming in. It's not foolproof, but it would reduce some of what, what you see in the time of dirt shopping.
So essentially, till we have that new proposal from them, there's no action.
No, this is just so we avoid total sticker shock.
Yeah.
Skip, thank you, first of all, for all your time on this. It sounds like you spent quite a bit of time researching these costs. And I'm curious, like, are there a lot of other companies similar to RB where it would make sense to be kind of price shopping? Or are they kind of a one-of-a-kind company?
Companies like this are one-of-a-kind. We've had experience, what was the one we had experience with?
Wormsby's.
Wormsby's, and they, they were, they weren't worth. They were supposed to be coming in here once a month and checking out things. And the guy would walk in the door, walk around it, ask if there's any problems, and walk out here, paying him for him to keep up with.
Yeah.
Are there others, probably? Are there others that are that local and have that type of facility? I doubt it. That's why I'm asking for references. And to put this in perspective, if you were paying me, you'd be paying me more than seven hundred and seventy dollars a month.
Okay.
Okay? Maybe the one-time cost would be, you know.
And what would they, if we were paying you?
If you're paying me, you'd be paying me more than seven hundred and seventy dollars a month. When I was working as.
Not to mention all the last three or four years or five years worked. And we haven't paid him, yeah.
No, you haven't paid me at all, and I don't want to be paid for it. And, and people have said we want to pay them. I said, no, because I'm going to walk away and not feel that I'm obligated to hanging here and supporting them, I can't do the work anymore. When I was consulting, I was getting anywhere from two hundred and fifty to five hundred bucks an hour. So you can see where that seven hundred and seventy bucks a month would eat that real quick. I've got, I've got probably twenty hours in the library this week. And DeeDee's getting it though.
I'll bet you some more.
Okay, we're good to meet this.
Do you see DeeDee coming in? Grand chocolate.
See, they're not going to. Did I answer your question?
I think you did. I mean, it, it sounds like it's a, a very reasonable deal compared to what the cost had made.
I think it is. I think it is. Oh, what's not in those numbers is the copier printer, which has got to be replaced come December anyway. And RV Technologies threw a curve into that because they will not let us scan directly from that copier, which is already insecure, to a PC. We have to scan to an intermediate medium. I'm talking with the copier company and saying, just a copier, have an internal drive that we can scan to, it's supposed to get back to me. So, you know, that's, we're all trying to get that straight. Other questions?
Thanks for doing that.
So we didn't put in any extra, add to what was already budgeted, approved budget because there was that surplus, you thought would cover it?
Because, and also the Lister's education, which is not needed for Lister's education that can be used on software. It's almost ten thousand dollars. A little over ten thousand.
Any other questions from the board? Any other? Any other questions in general?
None that would sound smart.
Go ahead. Pilot, that's not good.
Thank you all, appreciate it.
Yeah, thank you.
There's no objection, maybe we will move on to the next agenda item, which is the, the firehouse and.
You missed it last month.
Yeah, it seems like we've got pretty good progress over there.
Yeah, so.
Good night, gentlemen.
Night.
Our, our going's on, we'll start with FEMA. That's just been an ongoing nightmare for us. They rejected our, our cleanup work. Twenty thousand dollars, they're not going to pay us. They said we weren't eligible because we didn't pay anybody after I spent all the time working on it, saying, saying, so if we had paid someone to clean up the yard, they would have covered it since it was volunteer.
But then they, but then they made you keep track of all the volunteers.
Yeah, well, I told FEMA to shove it when they came this last flood. I told them, I can clean up the yard without filling out your paperwork. You have something to add?
Go ahead, Skip.
Well, yeah, for all the volunteers that conduct the town offices, FEMA is reimbursing us for that.
Really?
So I'm really surprised that they're not doing their.
I'm interested in that. Plus, I got a new FEMA guy. Two new FEMA guys and a new guy from the state that was this last week. So, yeah, there were some pretty ugly meetings because I was not really happy about that. And then I basically ghosted them for a month because I just wasn't, they were sending me meeting requests, I'm just ignoring them. Yeah, I just, we could, we've always taken care of each other in the town anyway. We're going to clean up the mess. I just don't need to fill out hundreds of hours of paperwork and attend a bunch of useless meetings to not get paid.
Do you have the hours, how many hours?
I do have it all, it's, it's just shy nineteen grand. It's in their thing and I just had to, they forced me to sign off and say we closed it out last week because somebody from Washington says, since they were, I don't understand it. The reimbursement rate's a hundred percent, but since there was no monetary value in the beginning.
Well, the rate because it's donated labor, so they turned that donated labor to, I think, twenty-eight dollars.
That's, that's what we got. That's what I heard all the way through the process. And then back in June, they started it and it was.
We should PDNG.
Well, we have a new person. I don't know, I was supposed to meet them next week. Because Terry's gone.
I know he's gone.
And then Chase Guerman, who was with the state, he's gone. So I got to new somebody. So I'll let you know after next week, maybe I'll get to meet with them. Frustrated if you could, to have come down. And really, they asked me after the last flood if I was going to work with them on a bunch of things. I told them, no, I've got other things to do with my time. You can go find your own stuff. I just, you know, joke, you play, it just, yeah. We've got enough to do without, without that. So we're still in work, and we got thirty-nine hundred dollars for the fire responses last summer. And the firehouse is still wending its way through the process. I think we just closed out recovery and we're supposed to move into mitigation. I don't know what that looks like. Because every time they would describe what that looks like, because what I would try to do is respond back to them and say, okay, my understanding of what you just said is just, no, that's not it. I said, okay, well, try again. And they'd tell me again, and I'd respond back and say, okay, this is my understanding of what you just said. No, that's not it, that's wrong. I'm like, so I, I don't know. Supposedly we'll get something, but I don't know what that is.
Why are you mitigating?
So, so the discrepancy is what we got for insurance compared to what it's going to cost to actually put the building back. And they didn't want to pay the, say, let's use rough numbers, a twenty-five thousand dollar difference, which is what they thought they owed me. But they said they don't pay that. But they said if I got new estimates and made the number bigger, that they would pay that. Does that make any sense to anybody?
For goodness sake.
Well, it kind of does.
We made the number bigger.
It does.
Yeah, and then they closed it and moved us into mitigation. And somehow, in FEMA math, that's going to make some money appear somewhere.
And there's some trigger level of.
I don't understand it. I just really, I honestly don't understand it, it's really frustrating. And the more they explain it, the less I seem to understand it. So I'm supposed to meet with the new, what's it, PDNG? They call it PDNG.
Program Delivery Manager.
Yeah, so we get a new person.
So you're meeting it face-to-face on site?
Well, I don't, I got an email today, I didn't get it, I was in Birmingham to the department house fire all day, so I got to deal with, what do you look to email? I don't know.
Because we do Zoom.
Yeah, that's what we've been doing, is either a phone call or a Zoom. So I may invite you in at some point so we can have the conversation about, as I said, I'm still confused about the labor. I, I just, but they hammered me pretty hard. I think there was eleven people in one of the meetings.
Don't you love that?
And they were all just, I'm like, I find, you guys don't even know what you're supposed. Well, it's unfortunate that people early on in the process told you that. I haven't heard, I don't know if it's factual, but they built the new firehouse and cabinet and the town paid for it, and people were telling them they're not paying for it.
Oh, you're kidding me?
That's what one of their selectmen told me.
That they have to move it or something?
Well, that, leaving that aside, they said, go ahead and build it and build it as a merchant. I think the town went and borrowed the money, built the temporary building. And now FEMA's like, yeah, sorry, I don't know who told you that, we're not paying. That was from one of their selectmen, so. I don't know that for fact, but, so we're not the only ones. I think what's going on with FEMA is they're, they made a lot of promises, they're running out of money. And they're finding ways to not pay. We didn't go through this in eleven, when with Irene, they paid everything. They paid stuff they're claiming not to pay right now, so. It's just extremely frustrating because it's hard enough to do all this work without having to fill out a bunch of unnecessary forms and attend to unnecessary meetings. So I really, I just told them it was office last time. Can you help us? No. But that's what that's about, not in a better way, it's just, I got better things. I, I don't want to waste volunteer people's time.
It's not like they're going to get paid.
Right, right. So it's like, I didn't mind doing it if there was, because again, we would have cleaned it up anyway. It's just if we could recover some funds, then that would be the way to go. Like we're trying to get something.
I understand why you can't recover those funds, that's wrong.
Yeah.
Whoever told you that.
Yeah, somebody from Washington, it's always a faceless bureaucrat that.
That's wrong.
You never talk to that person. But we'll have, we, we'll chat when I get to talk to the new PDNG person.
Did you get any damages this year?
So last flood, it, it came across and went in the building about the AD. Didn't, we had moved everything off the apparatus floor, so nothing got damaged this time. And then it receded, I think, I think a big slug. We were there, someone was there at midnight, someone was there at one o'clock. Somewhere between two and three o'clock, a big slug water came through, it was over a foot over the culvert.
This is just this most recent?
This lasted, two months ago, whatever it was, it washed.
July two.
Washed around toward our new driveway, about where that job trailer, we kind of went down through, I think it's gravel, it's a living hell house. Kind of washed their driveway out and it got them pretty good. And we had a big mess in front of the property, we cleaned it up the next day. Those few days, it was okay.
Construction, construction seems to be moving along over there.
Yeah, so we're doing good on the construction. It's a little bit delayed because we've had such wonderful weather. I know the slab getting poured is about two weeks late because you can't really risk a slab in the rain. I, I want to say they're two to three weeks behind where we were hoping to be, but the weather getting rained on it today. But their, their idea was to hopefully get that roof covered in with the, with the roofing tape on it by the end of the week. We'll see if they get that far.
So the, is that the addition on the south end?
No, that's all, that's, I'll move on to USDA next, that's a whole nother animal. If I have less hair, you know why I'm dealing with a lot of federal stuff. So, yeah, that's all going good. They've been, that's what I guess, as much as we can keep in the process. That was a little more work for me because we didn't pay for full reconstruction services, so I'm having to do submittals and approvals and.
So that is the USDA fee?
No, that's next summer, I hope. The whole USDA thing is not even on the table right now with construction.
Okay.
So we're getting questions on the building and then, because the building's moving along good. There's no hiccups, no major hiccups. So USDA, after trying all summer, I've got an architect hired who's supposed to do the schematic, schematic design and opinion of probable cost. I've got a fire protection engineer hired because we have to put in a sprinkler system, which is going to be kind of expensive. And I hired the, just last week, finally got the contract for Stone Environmental doing our environmental study, which is, it was, again, federal thing, it really frustrated because you'd say, well, what does Stone Environmental need to do? Because that would be a question I'd get from their people. They couldn't answer the question. Because what I did want to do is, we don't have a ton of money. All, all the money we're spending upfront is included in our map, so it's not wasted money. But I don't have money to waste, if that makes it, they don't have, again, they don't try again. My fear with the federal stuff is like FEMA, they, oh, that's not it. And you pay someone to do it again, that's what I'm kind of getting with FEMA. You just do this and you go do it. And they say, well, that's not really what we were looking for. So I think we've nailed that down, but, so the environmental study is happening this month into September. The architect is supposed to have his work done before September, at which point we'll be able to finish filling out the USDA paperwork to apply for the money that's, the Congress has given us. What it's going to build is a two thousand square foot addition to the south side. We'll dig that bank out, we'll bury a twenty thousand gallon water tank, it'll pay for the sprinkler system. So, so we got to see if, you know, if in real money, that's actually going to do it. And we'll have to make adjustments to the project and we can't spend more. And they're going to give us, we also have to have a match, so whatever we're matching, we got to have enough to, basically, at the beginning of the project, we have to show we have enough money. So we're still on track for USDA. If we can get it in this fall to get, once it's, they approve it, which could take up to forty-five days, then we have to go into the design phase, which then we would hope to be out in bid by January, late winter, late, late fall, early winter, somewhere in that neighborhood, to hope to try to get to next spring for construction. Because we just got to finish getting out of there, we just keep flooding. I don't, hope the world maybe it'll change by, or no, it's not, it's not looking promising. Because we're, you know, we all went through the stress again this past week of saying we need to move everything out of the building again. And this time it was the wind damage that's got everybody. So that's USDA, so we're still in process. I'm not in really control of that because we've had to hire the, the architects, somebody who's related with getting their way through USDA. And we're going to end up hiring them at the other end for full architectural services because they'll have to do all that paperwork to keep USDA happy. That's the downside of grants, is the, the grant submittals. You know, they can have pretty strict requirements, so.
So where is your septic compared to where you were going to put this addition on?
So if you face the building, the septic's on the, on the left between where the town land is and our building. There used to be four stakes sticking up, I don't know if they're still there.
And where's the addition going to be?
To the south side. There's a big pile of dirt there right now. It's going to all be dug out, so that'll be the most expensive, well, it's probably the most expensive part of the project, but.
Yeah, it, it looks like there's not enough room there.
Yeah, there is. We scaled it out and it's going to take, there's a lot of dirt. There's probably another forty grand worth of dirt to dig out of there. And there's ledge, we're going to get into ledge this time because there's ledge there. But they think they can pull it apart with their little cherry picker. I don't know what they call them on an excavator, break the ledge apart. But it's all kind of like, we'll see. You know, we got to see if where the prices come in, and they have to make adjustments facing on.
And that would allow you to have like a bigger, like a meeting room or something?
Yeah, so there'll be a meeting room, a storage room, which will get rid of all this being in multiple buildings, and we'll have two more days to park vehicles inside.
Really, that big, wow.
It's, it's two thousand square feet, so it's enough, it gets us all under one roof, which has been our goal right along. So it's good, we'll pay, we'll end up as a town paying for half the building, essentially. The feds will pay for the other half, which is great, but we're going to get there. And I'm just having to be patient because if you're like me, I like to see things get done and having to kind of wait for someone else to do it. You call them up and they don't return your phone call. And I'm just having to be patient, because if you're like me, I like to see things get done, and having to kind of wait for someone else to do it, and you call them up, and they don't return your phone call. You wait and wait and wait, and then they finally return your phone call, and then they'll have it next week, but it's not, you get the drill, that's kind of what we're going through, so. If you get any questions asked, feel free to call me, and I'll give you the best answer I have today. As far as FEMA, I wouldn't hold my breath waiting for, have you got any money from FEMA yet?
Oh yeah, we got like $6,000 this week.
Woo!
Yeah, really?
And you're already spending new money this year, I think. And that's FEMA, and then the buyout is still moving its way through, so, John, who's not here today, Gordon, said that he emailed them, because they were sending out notices for new properties for buyouts, and we were concerned that, well, what happened to the old properties they haven't done anything with? And they said, oh, the email we got back essentially said that there's more money coming through the system, and we're on the top of the list for that, so that'll be something we'll have to address. If and when, I wouldn't, again, wouldn't hold my breath, because I got in a bit of a dust off with the Deputy Commissioner of Public Safety, who was at our Mutual Lake meeting a couple of weeks ago, because they're, we're so proud of themselves for sitting on $90 million for mitigation stuff like ours, and they have been sitting on it for a year. And there's a lot of fire departments sitting there, saying, are you a bank? Yeah, you know, there's a lot of needs that aren't being paid, you guys are sitting on $90 million, so.
Why, they can't come up with a program or enough forms or something?
I don't know, I just don't know, it's frustrating. Because like you look at, you know, I was in Plainfield for the hazmat team, watching the mess they're going through.
Oh, God, no.
And, you know, FEMA's, FEMA's there telling them, hey, come to us, we're going to save the day, and I'm like. And that was a couple of select board members, and you need to be ready to, to eat this by yourself for a while. Because you're not missing the boat here by much. And private homeowners are suffering, and they think they're going to come in and save the day, it's really not going to happen. There's not a lot of money, so I told people, told the fire department guys, I said, just, just take care of your stuff, and keep track of it, but I wouldn't, wouldn't depend on this. Any questions, I don't want to bore you, but, and call volume, we're, what's amazing to me is we're as high as we were last year, but didn't have the influx of emergencies during the flooding. So we're equal to what we had last year at this time, so that's telling me we're, we're busier than last year already, without, without the major floods, so. The drug side of it has been fairly tame, it's just been a lot of other stuff. You name it, we've probably been to it in the last couple of months, so. There's a lot of need for particularly emergency medical services, and we did have to deal with that tree the other day, we stole a couple of your road signs and didn't pick them up. Well, I couldn't find out, well, I didn't know it was an entire maple tree over the road, it's, it's not safe, so I called, hired electric, and we went up. And it was shortly after you had called, someone else called in, they paged us out, and they couldn't give me an ETA, so we just stuck a couple of signs up, and said, there, if someone wants to drive through, they can do it themselves. We've done something to, to make it okay, and you're okay with the scrapping ones, I just, just to get it, because I don't need to, we don't want to have to sit and babysit power lines. Volunteers for sometimes eight to 24 hours to street to deal with, so. That's what happened the other day, I assume they must have cleaned it up.
Yeah.
You guys were out this morning, right?
Did they leave you messy?
Wasn't bad.
Okay, yeah.
They did pretty well, yeah.
Yeah, because I didn't realize it was a great big tree, I was like, oh boy, if that falls on somebody.
We brought the loader, just because we didn't know what to expect, but.
Yeah. Because I would have done it six that morning, Kelsey called me, and then he said, it was just a branch, I'm like, that's more a branch, that tree could kill somebody. And you don't want anybody touching it, because I think that's 7,200 up there, and that could kill somebody. Somebody wanders up and touches the tree that's on it, that could get you.
It's not the one on, on Cabot Road that Brandy was talking about, I hope.
Wheeler, Wheeler Hill?
This was right on Wheeler Hill.
She was talking about one on Cabot Road, there's a dead tree down.
Well, it's probably on the phone lines, because there's a section, and there's no power lines, yeah.
That was, that's what she said.
From like Danny's house.
You're right, it's this side of Dan's house, there was a pair of power lines.
Oh, it was, okay, all right.
But it is a telephone line, but there was power lines.
Okay, yeah, because we, in the middle there, there's a section with no power lines, and then I see stuff hanging there. We have to be careful, because they'll, they're more than happy to have us sit and babysit these lines. We're having to kind of push back with state police, we're having to kind of push back with utilities, because they're like, oh, just let the fire department sit there. And I said, one thing, if you're paying the guys to sit there, but, they even had Comcast wanting us to sit and babysit their power, their cable line, I said, 1,000 bucks an hour.
Yeah, really?
We'll send someone up, destroy and cut the thing out of the way, and throw it, no, no, don't do that, so we're having to push back a little bit. We're having accidents where it takes forever for the police to get there, so I'm hoping to meet with the lieutenant at some point, because it's having our guys sit around. That's what you're probably going to find more often than not, if the car's off the phone line, we're going to leave it. But we get stuck with them that are stuck in the traveling, and sometimes we're there for two hours, waiting for, exposing people, so I hope we can address that. Because you see the shift from the state to just keep shifting duties into the municipal section.
Sure.
Here, even volunteers end up doing it. Same sort of things happening, and part of your call volume increases, the same thing's happening in, in the medical side, people that really ought not to be at home, or home, and they're depending more on local emergency services. So it's going to drive your costs up, it's just how it is. There's lots of people getting to be older, who are not 60 yet.
Thank you, Paul.
All right, have a great day.
Question for you all.
Go for it.
By any chance, do you have any of the folding tables out in the town hall?
I can look, are you missing some? Okay, the ones that fold and have, okay, I'll look if you have any of them seen. Someone might have grabbed one, which were trained, might be in there, if it is, I'll just stick it back in.
Thank you.
Great, thank you, have a good night, everybody.
You too.
Good night.
Michael?
Okay, so, thanks for you guys, I did send this to everybody digitally a couple, three weeks ago. So there's another program that might be used to help different people with flooding issues, and this would be only for this year, not for last year. It's called the Emergency Watershed Protection Program. I talked to Brian Voight a little bit about this last week. And it's, it's a funding from the US Department of Agriculture's Natural Resources Conservation Service. And it's a program for both municipalities and private landowners for protection work, mediation work from, mostly from flooding. Cover like debris clogged waterways, unstable stream banks, severe erosion, jeopardizing public infrastructure, et cetera. And it's a, it's a, again, it is a federal program, so there would be kind of a 75%, 25% match in, in funding. And there are a number of different steps for it, the first step is that, you know, private landowners or the town, we would need to have, designate somebody as a sponsor. And I'm thinking of the town and the select board as a sponsor. And some of the things that I have been thinking of are the folks that came here at the last meeting from Blueberry Lake with their erosion problems. Ron Ratburn's perennial problem with Buck Lake Brook, there's the bank along Cabot Road. There's the bridge on Quirkskew Road that needs to be repaired, that may or may not be a town responsibility. And then there is a landowner, homeowner up on East Hill, whose property is slowly getting eroded away with different flooding events, and getting closer and closer to their house. So different things like that.
About the lady with the yellow campaign?
Yeah, that's another one, all, you know, the thing, yeah, I think there is, yes, that is another one that could be a possibility. So what happens with this is that there's a particular steps that would happen. First of all, we would have to designate a sponsor, and which could be the town. And then we have to submit a request for this assistance within 60 days of the watershed event, so it would be July 10th, 11th of this year. So we have till September, middle of September 10th. And it would just be a request, and then what we would do on our end, and I'm, when I say we, I mean myself, as the Planning Commission Chair. We would kind of publicly notice that this is a possibility, and see if there are other people in town that might be affected in some way. And they could let me know, I would create a list, and then we would submit that to the Natural Resources Conservation Service. They would eventually have someone come and do a site visit to all of the things that are listed, and they would choose which ones are ones that they would be willing to deal with. So it wouldn't be up to the town to make that choice, which would be good, I think. And then what would happen from there is there would be design work that, according to Brian, would be 100% paid for, any kind of engineering work to resolve many of the problems. And then the implementation, there would be funding for 75% of that, and then the match would be 25%. So if it was a private landowner that was benefiting, they would have to come up with a 25%, unless the town wanted to pay for that. And any of the town issues that we have, it would be up to the town to pay those, that 25%.
Michael, how, as a member of the Planning Commission, how would you advertise that to?
Front porch forum is probably about the only real thing that would work. And maybe we could talk about it more, about another select board meeting.
Would we come up with perhaps town projects at the next select board meeting?
You know, like I kind of consider Ron Ratburn's problem a town problem.
But, well, is there, is there any plan or solution or design or anything that would affect his problem?
Well, that's what the, if it's chosen, that's what the engineers would come up with, yeah.
Do you think that, you think you'd have to have some kind of a, an idea? I mean, is.
Well, that would, you know, the person doing the site visit would have an idea, it's not going to be up to me or anybody else in town to make that decision. It would be the person from the NRCS that would decide that, and then, and then there would, you know, I'm sure that there are some engineers that have some ideas of how to solve that problem. I know when we had the site visit for Buck Lake Brook, after the flooding from last year in December, you know, we had, when we had a bunch of state guys here, Vtrans. Skip and Alfie were also there, you know, we were looking at Buck Lake Brook as it does its final drop into the village, and looking at the banks, and, and they were throwing back ideas, back and forth ideas about what could we do to stabilize that bank. So these are the kinds of things that the engineers could come up with. And then, and I don't know, if it's a municipal thing, we could decide whether or not, okay, that makes sense, let's give it a try. And it would be up to the private landowner, if there was a site chosen, to decide whether or not they thought that the engineering would work.
And the one on East Hill?
The one on East Hill, well, that would, that's a private landowner, so if the NRCS decided that, yes, this is a site that we would be willing to help fund, then there would be engineering for that too.
And the homeowner pays 25%?
They would have to pay 20, they would be 100% would pay for the engineering, design work. And then if the implementation of, you know, public design work, that would be covered 75%, and then it would be up to the landowner to cover the 25%.
So does it make sense for our next meeting to have a longer portion of the agenda dedicated to this program? To identify possible town projects? And, or do you need anything else from the select board in terms of this?
No, and that would be, I could, we could get out the word, and perhaps I would have a longer list of town projects by then. And then we could also maybe have Brian Voight come, who could talk a little bit more knowledge of it about the program. Yeah, that would be, that would be a way to go, I think.
Seems like it.
Yeah, we have time, we have till September 10th, and, you know, even if we submit a letter saying that we would like to do this, and then we decide not to, there's no, there's no obligation to the site visits happen and the engineering starts. Yeah, except, in the, in the cover sheet here, sponsors' obligations are providing man rights, implementing repair works, securing all necessary permits, furnishing the local cost share, that would be for the municipal projects. Accomplishing required works of improvement to move imminent threat of unproperty, and then performing any necessary operation and maintenance into the future, once the implementation work is done.
I just want to see what you've got in your package there. Because I got two of these pages, and I'm not sure whether I'm missing anything.
I think you just got an extra page.
Oh, okay, because you got two pages of writing and one page of the handout, okay.
And then you had.
Somebody probably has one less page.
You missing one?
Uh, I have page two, and then I have two more.
Three, yeah, you have just three pages.
I do.
I have three also.
Okay, you should have three pages.
And Michael, it sounds like there's a, like a template, a letter template to request for assistance, that, and just the homeowner, the private landowner submit that? Or does the town submit it for them?
I think the town, as the sponsor, would submit that.
Okay.
So we would have a listing, I mean, I hadn't looked at that form yet, but, yeah, I assume that that's what would happen, we would have a listing of all the different sites.
This sounds like a really positive, like a really.
It could be.
Yeah, it could be.
Hard to say sometimes.
Yeah, thanks for investigating it.
And if you knew it, and it wouldn't be like a three or five year timeframe, I think we'd have a little bit quicker to try to do this.
All right, so we'll have that on the next.
So we'll have it on the next agenda, yeah, and I will try to, I'll put a thing on front porch forum and try to get the word out, and see if there are any other responses that I get.
All right. Must reduce threat to life in property, be economically, environmentally, and socially defensible, and be technically sound, oh, yeah. Can I get a lot of this?
We'll, we'll let the NRCS people decide if that meets those criteria.
Absolutely.
One of the things that is a little questioning troublesome to me is that the, says the Emergency Watershed Program cannot be used to repair damaged property, rebuild destroyed property. The others I sort of understand, but, you know, like with the bridge on Quirkskew Road, technically, I guess it's not destroyed yet, but it is damaged, so.
That's strange, yeah.
It's worth, it's worth applying, having them say no.
Yeah.
So that would, that would take that.
And maybe, maybe that wouldn't apply, so that's, it's kind of fuzzy gray stuff, and it would be the site visit person that would determine that. So, I mean, I would, we would, I would definitely let everybody know that this, your site may not be approved, just so you're not upset.
All right, thank you, Michael. Alfred?
So we got, oh yeah. You know, I put this on the, on here for the library board trustees, I didn't really expect anybody to show up, but she did show up, and she's been sitting here.
Yeah.
Do you want to say?
And I've also learned a lot, and appreciate all of the work you guys do. I wasn't sure if I had to or not, because I'm still so new.
Well, if you want to stay, if you want to stay, you can stay, and if.
We can do the.
But if I don't have to, I'll probably go check on dinner.
Okay, so.
Be jealous.
Or we can do the appointment right now.
Talk about that now?
Sure, if that's okay with these guys.
Won't take long.
Okay.
So you've got some responses to your search?
Yes, I don't have much to say, these two women, like Sarah Van Haas, have agreed to help out, so right now we have a full board, so that's, that's great news. Feels better going forward with five, five good people.
So we need to appoint August and Kathy?
Yep, so, and that's the good news, the bad news is, a lot of these people also don't want to do this long term, so, March, at town meeting, I just hope a lot of people come forward and, and want to pitch in. It's a great, it's a great library and a great board to be on. That's all I have to say.
Glad you like it, okay. So you want to go ahead and do, I, I guess I could just make a motion that we appoint Kathy Pelts and August Elliott to the Library Board of Trustees? And they can stay as long as they want?
Yeah, maybe they'll want to stay beyond March.
They might like it.
Sarah and August have already served.
Sarah, we appointed her last time, and Sarah and August have been on the board for at least one term before, no more.
But they're helping out.
Is there any further discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor of appointing Kathy Pelts and August Elliott to the Library Board, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion passes unanimously, thank you.
Thank you.
All right.
Back to the road commissioners' report, it's like we're talking about class four roads, and then.
Well, those are just things that I put on there, he, he can give his report, and then.
Got it.
Those are just prompts.
So we've put a lot of the large culverts in, since we last voted.
Whoa.
Two, two four footers and two three footers are all in place, and so far they're working great.
So where, where were they, on county roads?
There was two on East Hill Road, two four footers on East Hill. These are ones that have caused the large portion of East Hill's washouts. So presumably that won't happen again. We put the four footer on the county road extension, which was part of last year's FEMA. We put the four footer on the county road extension, which was part of last year's FEMA object, so that's complete.
Did they want, is that where they wanted a more than four foot one?
Yeah, they wanted, well, they wanted a 54 inch barrier foot. So, they got a four footer.
Six inches, okay.
Yeah, yeah, it's, it's close to what they ran. So, that, that's, that's done, I'm putting, I'm closing Cabot Road on Wednesday to put another, another three footer. It's another spot that is chronically flooded.
Replacing an 18 inch?
Replacing an 18 inch to a three footer, just so that that doesn't happen again. It's a brook that kind of comes down off, I don't know if it's a year round brook or not, but there's, you know, when it rains, it's really boring. So, I'm going to change that out on Wednesday. I've contacted the quarry and the other company that is hauling out of there, just to give them a heads up and say, you're not going to get through. So, I'm going to leave it open until like 11:00 and that's when I'm going to close it. I think I can get it done, open back up before time to go home, starting at 11:00. So, that's the plan for that. Just haven't really had much time for grading, because I've had, one, it rains every other day and two, my manpower has been taken up by these big culverts, because it really takes three people to be there for those.
I stepped out a second, but you, you still have the big machine, did you already talk about that?
Still have the big machine, I've got maybe one or two weeks left with that. And so, I'm going to move that to Cabot Road and use it for that, that three foot culvert. And then, I wanted to talk about the rail trail, because that's another one that's closed officially right now. Still need to get to Nichols, Nichols ledge road. I haven't gotten there yet.
How bad is that compared to the last time?
Anywhere near false.
But it's still not passable?
It's not passable to a car. Four wheeler, motorbike probably could get through it, but certainly not a car. But it's not going to take anywhere near what it did last year. I mean, it's not as, as deep, it's not as, as wide.
Is that a culvert that washed out as well?
Last year was a culvert that got overtaken and flooded the whole, the whole road out. This year it was, it did get overtaken, we upsized it a little bit, obviously not enough, but it didn't wash near as bad. We ended up putting a two foot culvert in there and clearly it probably should have been a three footer.
And you have a three foot to replace it with, or is it not worth it?
I don't, I'll have to do that, I'm thinking I'll do that in another, in another budget.
Yep.
Or another time, just because it's most storms, that two footer is taking care of it, you know, so... So, I'm sort of thinking that's where, that's, that's where I'm headed, is to those smaller roads now, to at least get them passable.
Old Quarry Road?
That's on their list, yeah. That, and I think I can do most of that with what gravel's there, and just run the grader of it and get that open back up, if that's on my agenda.
That's not passable right now?
You can pass it, but it's not comfortable.
Yep.
You know, small car would definitely have problems.
Yeah, I had to back up last.
Yeah, a pickup, a pickup, you can probably get through it, but like I said, not permanently. So, I think I can fix that with just a grader, if I need it lower to a gravel, but shouldn't be a big deal.
So, yeah, no declaration yet, right? Skip for funding for the flood this year, you think there will be, or is there any talk about it?
The governor has requested one.
Yeah.
It's just taken time to get from the governor to the president and then...
Plus, in addition to July 10th, there's this other that happened up in St. John Mary, Lindenville. I don't know what they rolled those all together, what?
I heard they were trying to combine those.
Yeah, that would make sense.
The government was trying to clump that in together with the, with the July 10th.
Unfortunately, our rail trail happened just before July 10th, right?
It did?
I think so.
No?
I think that's when, when it happened, yeah.
All right.
Yeah, because we talked about it and...
But they already said we couldn't hook it on to last year, right?
No, we can't do that.
Right, last year's is not.
But it would be part of this new, if there's a new declaration, it could be part of that.
Otherwise, we have to pay for it, if there's no declaration, right?
Yeah, yeah, or there might be some other avenues of funding available. You know, who knows? Yeah, maybe this emergency watershed protection program.
Yeah.
Well, the snow machine club at one point said they would help with it.
Yes, yeah, and I believe they're still willing to.
Right, they were, they were, they were supposed to help with last year's flood.
They were, but then we ended up getting, well, we haven't got the money yet, but FEMA's supposed to pay for all of it, so... It's like, why make them pay, FEMA's going to pay.
Yeah.
So, if it's not a priority, maybe we'll...
Maybe, well, this year it's going to be a priority, and when November rolls around, if you want to travel that, it's going to be a priority for them.
So, if we don't jump on it?
What I mean to say is they're going to come and put pressure on us to fix it, so we can get through. So, maybe they would be willing to cough up a little bit, because this is a smaller project. Last year was pretty astronomical amount of money to repair. This year is not that much.
Yeah, but it ended up being what, 30,000 maybe last year?
30,000, right here I have above 26,000.
It was close.
Do you have any guesses to what it would be for this time around to repair the damage?
Well, again, it depends on what we decide on for repair. I'm suggesting a, a header, concrete header, to keep that from washing around the wall.
More expensive.
It's a little more time consuming and, and more expensive. I mean, now, I can go and just fill the void in with regular gravel, but that's not going to be a long term, it's, it's not going to, you know, it's just going to happen again most likely. So, I, I like to, you know, mitigate and do, do a little bit more.
Is that something...
That's a big word for me, I know.
Thanks for noticing.
Do you want to do it again next year?
So, no, I mean, I just, you know, this is going to be a new thing, this is a fairly new thing for us and it's not going away, these floods, this heavy rains. Any chance we can to better our culverts and our waterways is, is money well spent.
And we've found for years and years and years with no expenses on that rail trail. And we've never budgeted for it, and we probably should.
Yeah, well, because we're, we're, we're obligated.
Responsible, right?
Yeah.
And at least, right?
Alfie, are you looking to do that work while you still have the big excavator to the rail trail?
Ideally, but not necessarily.
Okay.
I haven't seen it since, since July, after the July flood, so I don't know if these other rains have caused more damage. I mean, the culvert could be down under 14, but now as far as I know, I really don't have it there.
Yeah, okay.
But if it's not, if it's still there, I think I could probably do it with the smaller excavator and I could let the, let the big one go, or save that until later on after the work with the big one's done.
Okay.
I do however, need the, the big one for the Corkscrew Bridge.
Yeah.
If we're going to do that, and that's something we should decide on.
Reminder, the Corkscrew Bridge is the bridge that's affecting one...
One single family.
Right, but we decided that the last meeting, like, a fire truck couldn't go over it, that we needed to move ahead of that, whether we have a declaration or not.
I got vibes that we were going to fix it.
Yeah.
Yeah, I mean, we, we can't really find any solid evidence that it's on any of our town road maps, but we've always treated it as a town road and I think, well, there is one source I haven't looked into for as far as the map. We repaired the bridge before, so, or replaced it, I guess.
Yeah, I think that's what attaches the...
I thought we like knew it was a Class IV road. So, Dana, did you go looking, did you do some research? I guess I had thought that we were sure it was a Class IV road, but did you do research that didn't prove that?
The only research I did was looking at the state maps online. I didn't, actually, I had a, an idea to go in and research some of the surveys that were done by Russell Demming of some of the Meyer property over the years, because I know there's at least some maps that have Corkscrew Road on there, but whether or not it'll just say Corkscrew Road, or whether it'll say Town Highway or Corkscrew Road, I don't know.
Gotcha.
Yeah.
On the VTранs map from 2014 of town roads, Corkscrew Road is not on that map. And in the same, you know, from the last meeting, the extension of Bailey Bridge Road past the Class IV part down to the two lakes is also not on the, not on the map.
So, does, is that like conclusive that it isn't...
I don't know if it's conclusive or not, I don't know where they get their information from. If they get it from the town, it's probably not already...
Robin dug out some maps from back when the, the, our state developer had a big plan for making all the subdivided lots and going to have a marina connecting Greenwood Lake and Valley Lake and... Yeah, all the beautiful things that never happened, that Peter ended up owning most of the lots, I think. But anyways, Robin dug out those maps and all they say is, you know, development road.
I guess, I don't know, I feel like we shouldn't be doing work to roads if we're not pretty solidly convinced of our town roads.
Class III, it was upgraded from a small section of Class IV to a larger section of Class III. They went through the process, probably at least 10 years ago, and they didn't, they didn't finish the process, but I do recall, I know that they did at least approve it as Class III up as far as wherever it is you turn around now.
Are we talking about Bailey Bridge?
Yeah.
Okay.
Yeah. So, beyond, because there were like four houses on there already.
Yeah.
And they did the process of upgrading it to Class III standards, but they didn't go beyond there, because there was nothing but a couple of camps way down there, so I'm going to have to get back to Kathy and tell her that...
Bailey Bridge, are you asking?
The Class III is up to the top of the hill and that's where the...
And then once you start heading down?
There is a road that goes down and that's Class IV, pretty much, at least from, this is my judgment on what's on the map. I think it's Class IV maybe to the bottom of the hill.
No, no, after, after where they turned around, after the turnaround, the part that was upgraded to Class III when Peter built the new house, and there's a couple other houses out there now. Beyond that, it's not Class IV.
Okay.
There's no, no indication...
On the VTранs map, there's a section that's Class III and then there's like an eighth, tenth of a mile section that's designated as Class IV.
That used to be, yeah, that's what it used to be. But the, but the new part that was upgraded, you're, you know, within memory anyways, is not on the map, because the, the town never went the step of getting it on the map, so we don't get our, whatever money we usually get.
While we're talking about this, I actually got a call from a person that owns sand down there, owns a camp down there.
Yeah.
He's now turning it into a year round. So, he's asking for that to be brought back to a class, or brought up to Class III.
Well, he'd have to pay for it.
That's what I told him, I said, I said, I don't know exactly how Woodbury does it, but they'll, they might take it over if you pay to bring it to the standard.
Yeah, I, you know, yeah, I don't know.
So, he's supposed to talk, I said, I put it back to you guys, because that's your decision. I just said, you need to call the select board and have a conversation with them about that, because it's...
The thing is about that road is that when it was originally built, I mean, this is probably in the 90s, they did a really good job for a development road.
The class, the Class III part?
The whole part, the whole thing, was pretty well built compared to what it...
Beyond where...
Yeah, I know, but the, but what the developer did, when he first had this big grandiose plan, was he built that road, did quite a good job for a, you know, and so when, when they wanted to upgrade the section to Class III, it wasn't all that expensive, because they just had to, you know, clear out the dishes and add some gravel, so... Beyond there, I think it's, but anyways, it doesn't matter. The state has standards for Class III roads and...
So, I just want to let the, everybody know that we are over our time. I said, I said I would be, try to keep us on track. I'm happy if the board, especially the board, would like to continue the road commissioners' report, we can do that, or we can move to super pressing stuff and then move on.
Biggest thing for me is an answer about Corkscrew, because, I mean, I need that big update for that and we don't want to have to lament it again later on.
Well, I think you should go ahead and do it.
I disagree, I think, Alfie, are you able to, like, or somebody? I think we should research it and figure out if it is a Class IV road.
Did you say you disagree?
I do disagree. I don't think we should just do it if we aren't sure that it's a Class IV road. So, I mean, I guess I would volunteer to try to do some research, unless that's something like, if you have access to a roadmap at the town garage and if it's easy to figure that out?
It's not on that.
On the state map.
There's a roadmap in the, in the little, well, it used to be where the select board met at the town office too.
I mean, I think you have to look at the, you know, like, at deeds, different deeds.
Yeah, you've got some work cut out.
Okay, maybe I'm unvolunteering.
The one thing that's going to tie you to it is, is that you've worked on that bridge before. And that's, that means that you're, you're...
So, we've assumed responsibility for it before?
The person kind of has a right to rely on the fact that we'll keep it passable. I mean, it's not like it fell in or anything, is it a whole lot of work that needs to be done?
The, the bridge needs to be taken off, the deck needs to be taken off. And there, on one side of the abutments, which is only boulders, it's just built with boulders, that has settled and it's unlevelled.
You talking about a day's worth of work with the big excavator?
Probably a day, maybe two. It's probably most of the day to get the cap, the bridge off, the deck off, and then another day to, to reset the blocks. There, on both sides of the bridge, there are these huge concrete blocks that the, that they're setting on. The blocks are sitting on these just rubble boulders. And the water came down and washed out behind the boulders, allowing them to settle. So, that's why the bridge is sitting kind of unlevelled. So, I think, yeah, I would count on a couple days with the machine and my guys to, you know, we've got to take the guardrails off, we've got to disconnect them. You know, the bridge is just kind of setting on these concrete blocks and so...
And the lady will receive fair warning to...
Yeah, yeah, I've already talked with her, I've already talked with her about that.
She can stay home for a couple days.
I may have to build a bridge, a walking bridge.
She'll probably be able to manage.
Yeah, I mean, I, you know...
She knows.
She will know, I've heard, I've been talking to her some about it and, but I think, you know, she's probably eighty, you know, along her taking chances, walking through the waters.
She wouldn't walk anywhere from there anyways. It's not like she's...
Not in her house, to her truck.
Her, she parked her truck out by 14.
She could, yeah.
And she's got to walk from the trailer to her house.
But even if she doesn't move her truck, even if she stays home for two days, yeah.
I wouldn't feel right asking her to do that. I mean, she may have to go to a doctor.
Well, yeah, there's always emergencies, yeah.
I, you know, I think that there should be access to, to anybody's house at any given time.
What would you think about the board having, if Alfie can do this, setting that project for like that last week that you would have the big, big excavator? And in the meantime, that would give you some time to find out that it wasn't a town road? And then, if you can't find that out, I think it sounds like, this is just my opinion, that we've assumed response... that we've assumed responsibility for it in the past. So it sounds like we're going to be, in the eyes of the law, responsible for that in the future?
Um, yeah, so just to ask a few more questions about that, like, I'm not looking to set out to prove that it's not a town road. I just don't wanna be like willy nilly doing work on these roads if we don't even, you know, as a rule of thumb, I think like we should be looking to make sure that we are responsible for them before we put the money in. Um, but I mean, if it's definitely something that we've worked on, if everybody feels solidly that that is, you know, kind of a precedent that's been set, then I guess I would be okay with just going ahead to do it. Um, it just seems like there's a lot of roads out there that we aren't solidly sure of, like what their status is. And, you know, I don't know, there's a lot of money getting spent.
Yeah, it would be nice to have somebody to like do a project for six months to research all our roads. That'd be nice, but we could have a policy and.
Well, I mean, not to pick on any particular bridge, but we're not really certain that, that twenty-three is a class four.
Yeah.
Or where that stops, twenty-four, I mean.
Yeah, exactly.
Where does that stop?
Right.
The map says it stops at, at the water. So did the town build that bridge originally when the house was built or did the individual?
Grant company.
You gotta be careful with what can worms open because it could get really big.
Yeah, uh, so I'm, I'm not gonna try to hold this up. Um, if everybody feels that the work we've done in the past is good enough to, um, set a precedent, then I'm good with continuing.
I was on the select board when the bridge was repaired.
Oh.
As was I.
Oh, okay, okay.
So we assumed that it was ours at the time?
Yes, it was assumed then that it was a class four road. Um, we had a different road form then, of course, but, um, and it was determined to be derelict at that point or, or so that it needed to be repaired. So, and there is a legal precedence for a town, uh, working on a road. I can't remember this particular term for it. It's two words, but I can never remember what they are. So, I mean, I don't think this person would hold the town responsible, but, um.
But she would have a choice.
Yeah, yeah, she probably, she's an eighty-year-old woman living in a trailer. She probably can't afford to repair it on her own.
Does that give you enough direction? Sounds like.
I was the only pet, Alfie, and I'm stepping aside.
I, I, I agree. I, I agree that we're doing a lot of work on, on all of our roads and we should make sure that we own them. But I think on this one, the work that we've already done in past years, that tells us that we, you know, even if it's not a class, even if we determine it's not a class four, we've already fixed it.
Okay, so we've already assumed.
Already taken ownership of this road.
Okay.
And I think that's, that's, you know, when FEMA, like some of the work that Skip and I have done through FEMA, you have to prove that you have done work on, you know, class four roads to prove that it's a class four road. But to prove that it's an obligation to the town.
Okay.
So that's what's resonated in my mind, that we have to, that we are responsible for this particular bridge. Because we've already done work to it.
So you feel you have the approval to go ahead with that? Put that on your schedule or do you need more?
I don't think you need to vote on it.
Okay, okay.
You have my approval.
Okay. I mean, I just, it's, it's no different than Carol. Carol doesn't wanna be without the ability to get across that there's an ambulance or a, or a fire truck or. And we've done a lot for Carol. We've done it now twice and we're not done yet.
Yeah.
Um, but this is, I mean, it's no different really, so I feel like.
Just one more quick question on a class four road. Have you heard anything from Nichols Dam Road? Has anybody come to you with any requests for material or anything?
Uh, no, they just way back when they asked for road calls signs, I put road calls signs up.
During the eclipse?
Or, yes.
When was that? Oh.
Right after the flood, right after.
In April.
Oh.
So.
I mean, the road that goes down to the dam, the one that we, we now acknowledge as our class four road?
No, I haven't heard anything of that.
I can fill you in a little bit on that. Um, I didn't go to the Nichols Pond Association meeting. Happened last weekend, I think, or the weekend before, but, um, they are planning on repairing the work, roads some. Um, and Nick Meyer, uh, Evie Hyde excavator has been used before. Um, I don't know if they know that they can request gravel or not, um, but.
Well, we, yeah, we mean.
I haven't, there was nothing in the meeting minutes that they were gonna request gravel from the town.
Well, I think, yeah, they should, it, I mean, he had, um, given gravel to class four road residents if they were gonna do their own work. And I think that would be the same situation with, with the.
I mean, that's another class four road where there is a group of people that use that road that claim it's a private road.
Right, we don't, we don't need to go down, it's our road.
Go there, but, yeah, I agree, it's our road. But, um, but there, anyway, it sounds like.
But there are enough that they can contribute towards, they have an association and they can contribute towards some of their own maintenance.
Yeah, and, and we have a person that can, has done the maintenance in the past, um.
Oh, wow.
So.
Thanks.
I, I have been using, sort of using my judgment on these class four roads as they, as they request gravel. But sometimes they ask more than what I think is necessary.
Sometimes I wonder whether they'd be happy to just like pay for. You know, if there's a question?
Yeah, but the town can't accept money.
Why not?
Cause we're a nonprofit, I don't, maybe they.
Sure can.
It does set a pretty scary precedent.
Well, you know, if somebody, if somebody comes to us and we say, well, we're not really sure that's a town road, uh, we can help you out, but it's gonna cost you. Uh, you know, it's better if they, they hire somebody else.
Money in the waters.
Yeah.
They can go to gravel construction and get some gravel.
Huh?
They can go to gravel construction and get some gravel.
Yeah.
I'm gonna recommend that we move on to, thank you Alfie. Yeah, I'm gonna recommend we move on to the recovery officer's report. Yep.
All right, so, it's a somewhat more positive report.
I know, it's great.
Than Paul had, and I feel for Paul because we lost our PDMG last week as well. And there's been no one assigned yet. And anyhow, I'll get into that in a little bit. So what's been going on? I participated in a tabletop site inspection, which is, you know, this nine-page form that you go over with, with some guy from DC. And this is for the speed radar sign.
Oh.
Don't figure. And so that was, happened on August sixth. On August fifth, I signed a Department of Public Safety sub-recipient grant agreement for, on the town's behalf. The grantee is, uh, Brandy Smith. So, um, the state has signed off on that, so we're all set in terms of the process to start receiving funds. And we had a video conference call on August seventh where the program delivery manager announced he's leaving. No replacement announced, which is, you know, this will be the fifth one since September. So every time a new person comes in, you have to train them. And so anyhow, so that's gonna result in delays probable for projects that are pending initial project development. And those projects, uh, uh, where are they here? County Road, Cabot Road, ten and twenty, North Handy Bell Road, Nichols Pond Road, et cetera, et cetera.
And are those projects that haven't even made it to Puerto Rico yet?
No, they're still sitting in the queue.
Great.
They're just sitting in the queue and what was, they signed back in October. So, you know, I can feel Paul's frustration.
So that six thousand dollars and something that we got, was that for the speed sign?
No.
Oh, okay.
It's really exciting.
All right.
So, you know, much to my surprise in my inbox on August sixth was, uh, two forms. One FEMA subgrant application and one State Department of Public Safety financial report that they asked me to sign. And this is for project number seven four one six ninety-three, which is Town Highway twenty-three bridge replacement, replacing it with a temporary bridge to the two hundred sixty-five, hundred and thirty-three dollars. So the good thing is, is that arrived in Brandy's coffers, if you wanna call it, today.
Yeah.
So I wrote that, Brandy, myself, this guy, and Danielle should go out and have an adult beverage because this is just the start of what's gonna happen, which is great. So the good news again is there are five obligated projects. And these are the projects that's made all the way through FEMA. And the five obligated projects total of about eighty-three thousand five hundred dollars. They are Cabot Road, Town Highway twenty-four Bridge Repair, Oak Quarry and Blake Hill Roads and East Hill Road. So I believe in the next two weeks, I'll be receiving subgrant applications from FEMA and a State Department of Public Safety financial report to these documents for each of these projects. As soon as they hit my inbox, I'll sign them and get them on their way. So I believe in the next two or three weeks, we'll have about eighty-five, eighty-four thousand dollars going to Brandy as well. And so projects in process, there are three that are pending environmental and historic preservation review. It's weird. One is the Hardwick Rail Trail, Woodbury Hardwick Rail Trail. One is North and South Parks and the other one is Wilbur, Oyster Hill Road, et cetera, et cetera. And those projects total fifty thousand seven hundred. Following up on projects pending initial project development again are Cabot Road, County Road and North Handy Bell Road. And following up on projects pending initial project development, projects not completed, the speed radar signs and Robin's, Robin's offices. And the mitigation projects, which are those large projects, yeah, for approximately a million dollars.
The bridges, you mean?
Yeah, for both of those, Town Highway twenty-three, twenty-four bridges, based on our report from DeWolfe. They were approximately, they total approximately a million dollars, okay? So we did some dinging on that because it appears as though we're not gonna get an RFP up for that work this year. You know, I looked at the contract, we folks signed with the engineer and that just has a completion date of twenty twenty-four.
But you've talked to him since, I mean, he came and did that, no, I'm looking at Alfie. He came and did the drilling, right?
We did the drilling, yeah.
Yeah, did you go to that too?
I wasn't aware. I haven't, I don't know Nate's email and don't even know what he looks like. If you walk through the door, I don't know. So we had a discussion and FEMA and the state have decided that the only way these projects could be moved forward and have extensions written for them is that they were obligated. So in other words, it has to go all the way through the process to be obligated. So let's set up a reply, cause we don't have any real firm costs. So the state wrote back and said, don't worry about firm costs, do estimated costs. So they have all this stuff. I signed all the documentation for them to move it from Williston down to Puerto Rico to start that process going.
Oh, goodness.
It's gonna be a somewhat expedited process because if it's not obligated by, what is it, January fourteenth of twenty twenty-five, we'd be on the hook to do the mitigation project.
And if it does get obligated, then we can apply for that extension?
Yes, I have that in, in email, which I'm gonna hang over my face.
But if we did, I mean, I understood that, um, Nate intended to get the project out for RFP in the fall.
Doesn't matter, we can use the estimate.
Oh.
Okay, there's no real rush for him to get it out for this particular part. So these two projects, one five hundred and forty-two thousand, the other is four hundred and fifty-seven thousand. If for some reason the projects come in over this, we can write to the state of Vermont for more money. Okay, so this is an estimate. They understand it's a probable estimate for mitigation appearance for these two bridges. So we're covered in that sense. So I'm gonna keep on our friends at FEMA and to make sure this process is expedited and have the project obligated back to me so I can write for this extension in the summer.
Is that gonna be difficult to get it obligated? Or do you think that, you said that they might fast-track this, why would they fast-track this?
Right, it has been fast-tracked, fast-tracked. I've signed, pre-signed documents.
Okay.
So as it, as it goes down the line, they have these documents already signed. They don't have to come to me and say, sign the documents. So they're already signed, they're out of the PDMG's hand. Cause he said he would do that before he left, which he did. Pretty honorable guy. And, uh, so anyhow, they're down in Puerto Rico and hopefully they won't get a hurricane or something like that to delay the process any further. So that's about all I have. I'm waiting for FEMA to name, excuse me, a new program delivery, uh, manager. Don't know when that's gonna happen. We have a Zoom call queued up for this Wednesday at nine AM. Hopefully someone from FEMA will show up. I do not know who to send the, uh, the, uh, meeting announcement to. It's just like they vanished. And, you know, I think Paul echoed that too, you know? So anyhow, that's what we are, we have money coming in, which is to me just astounding.
That's a big step.
Yeah, it has.
You guys should definitely do that.
So that's all I have.
Thank you.
All right. Thank you. No more flow charts or anything?
No, we're too late. I have tons of flow charts, but we're too late.
Okay.
Save it for the next meet.
Next time.
So, thank you Skip, appreciate it. We've done the appointments. We have a Swenson Granite, a complaint about increased traffic and noise.
Yeah, I just wanted to report that we did have a complaint that these new trucks that Brandy has mentioned, uh, that are hauling grout are, are really big dump trucks. And they're a lot noisier than the, uh, big transport trucks that transport the big blocks of granite, so that is probably. I started working on a letter to them, I think it's time to reopen some negotiations because we don't know exactly what they're doing up there and what they have permits for and what they don't have permits for and. And, uh, they haven't increased the amount that they give us for money for a long time. I, I don't know where my file is on this, but I do have, I did, I've been doing some research on how much they've, in two thousand nineteen, they got the permit to move the new entrance and we did a whole, rebuilt that whole road. I don't think you were here yet. And I would have figured out who paid for that. I don't know whether we had a grant or whether.
The entrance in for the new section?
From the old, from the old road to the new entrance was substantially upgraded. I think Chuck was working on that at the time.
Pretty sure the town paid for that, I was on the clipboard then.
Yeah.
Did you say two thousand sixteen?
Nineteen.
I think there was a grant, I think the town got a grant for, for resurfacing that.
Yeah.
And I only, I only hear that through the grapevine.
Yeah, Brandy probably knows, she might remember. So, yeah, in two thousand and one, they got a permit to increase to four hundred thousand cubic feet a year. And then, um, later they got an increase to seven hundred and fifty thousand. In two thousand and one, the, before, in nineteen ninety-one, they were. In 2001, before, in 1991, they started giving us 5 cents a cubic foot. And, and 2001, 10 years later, they increased it to 6.5 cents, and it's been that ever since. Things, you know, are costing more. At one point, at one point, they did ask that we somehow, or that the road crew keep track of what additional costs were incurred by babysitting those trucks. And I don't think that ever happened.
That never happened, I was on the clipboard and the group.
Yeah, but we certainly do, I mean, they need something in the winter, they call and they get it, so.
Yeah, I mean, we pay extra attention to that.
Right, yeah.
With the salt and with the sand and the whole.
Yeah, so anyways, I'm doing some more research and I'll get that letter off to you guys to...
Do you expect to invite representatives?
I, you know, we, we could do that, but if, if I throw out this letter and we start some negotiations, it might not have to happen, see what they say.
Thanks for doing that.
Yeah, thank you.
Yeah, because they're not paying us anything right now for all that grout they're taking off that hill.
Right.
What is, what is grout?
Grout is the big stone.
That fall off when they're making the big block that the guys haul to bury.
But they somehow get it in...
Sort of their waste product when they, when they make these square blocks that you see on the road, it's sort of their waste product.
What do they use it for?
Gravel.
Gravel?
They crush it, break it up, crush it up, and put it back on the road.
They don't crush up there though?
They did crush up there recently, within the last year or so, they did quite a bit of crushing. They had a crusher there. They hired it, hired the crushing out, somebody else came, I can't remember the name of the...
Probably McCullough, who, no one was the guy from the John's here.
Donald.
Yeah.
Donald, that's right.
In McDonald's, right?
They were up there crushing.
That was right before or during the, right after the block?
Crushing granite.
So, I was thinking three years ago.
There was a big, there was a mountain of crushed gravel.
I know Chuck was kind of working on maybe a way of getting, you know, having them give some of that to the town for it, but then he determined that the stone was probably too sharp to use the crushed stone, so.
And their terms weren't all that comfortable.
Right.
Because they, they came to me when I was for cows, working with cows, and they wanted to sell cows and much of it also. But they wanted to sell 10,000 yards of, of wax, and like, that cleans my budget out. And then some, there's no way a town can commit to 10,000 yards of material. And they wouldn't budge.
Really?
I was like, no, but maybe we can do 5,000 yards, commit to it. But they said, no, they had to be 10,000. So then I started looking into, well, maybe two towns could, could join efforts and, and meet their quota, but it just...
I mean, was the price right, other than that?
Uh, I think at that time it was, I think they were like 13...
It was worth considering?
It wasn't, I remember, it wasn't a terrible price per yard.
The attractive thing for me was it's close. You know, trucking is killing all, any, any small thing, so it was close, so that's why I was just saying the idea. But 10,000 yards is just, was just too much, and they weren't willing to negotiate off of that.
Isn't that silly?
Yeah.
I wonder if they found somebody, oh well.
No, I think, well, we took a lot of it last year for the flood.
They donated that, right? Or did we buy it from them?
Uh, the gravel that was crushed, we purchased.
You purchased it?
Yeah, we purchased that. The, the big stuff, the stuff that they're now smashing up, we, they donated to us.
Okay.
That's what we use for the ditch lining, right?
No.
No?
No, that's processed. We use, we use the Boulders Type 2, Type 2 stone, which is two foot.
Oh, for places where, that were totally washed out?
This is where it was totally washed out, in a big hole, we put that in, and that's a good base. And then, and that was all donated to us.
Okay.
It was like 100 loads, I think, is what we, um, you know, sort of, we didn't keep track of every load because there was so much going on. But we, you know, the paperwork, we estimated about 100 loads.
Yeah.
So, you know.
Anyways.
Not to go against the, the fact that this needs to be relooked at, but they were very kind to us during a, a very desperate time.
They've been good neighbors of us, you know, in a lot of ways.
To let us get that material.
Yeah, yeah. Of course, they had to get rid of it.
Yeah, it was actually helping them too.
Yeah, right.
They needed the stakes because of all this waste product, they're, they're just getting covered up.
I mean, you know, look at the, for granite waste, I mean, jeezum girl.
Yeah.
They get a lot of it and bury it too.
That's right, that's right. Which there's a company down there crushing that also.
Oh really?
There's a big company that's rock crushers and doing, it's a, it's a lot, it's a lot of work to, to crush granite.
Did you send a lot of that grout to Plainfield?
I don't think I want that job.
They're still hurting bad.
What was that?
Plainfield.
Oh, yeah.
Alright, moving on. Updates in other business, did we already talk about the Baylor Beach Road?
We did, I thought, yeah, I thought since it was in our minutes from last...
Knock that off the list.
Update it, but we don't have to do it again.
Thank you. E Michael?
Yeah, so, um, fellow policy analyst who's working on the local hazard mitigation plan for the town has fast-tracked to relook on that. Apparently, the town would be totally good if the local hazard mitigation plan was submitted within 30 days of a disaster declaration, um, as submitted to Vermont Emergency Management for approval. So Paul has been working, you know, putting attention into Woodbury's plan. And he's also, there are a number of other towns that are still trying to meet that 30-day deadline. And so far, because there hasn't been a disaster designation, you know, there's still a amount of time. So that's the plan, to have that plan submitted to Vermont Emergency Management within 30 days of when, when and if there is a disaster declaration.
So it would be within 30 days after the declaration?
30 days from when the declaration is made, yeah. And, you know, he's working on it now. So that's what's happening with that plan.
And you did some survey or something? Was that part of it?
Yeah, part of the redoing the local hazard mitigation plan is, and we put out a survey. I think we have 35 responses from the town so far. And that's probably all we've got at this point. And we did, we did a survey last time too, that's, that's part of the process. One of the, one of the avenues that we can put.
There's a note in here, Diana, for other flood mitigation projects, or is that...
There was some, we talked about it one or two meetings ago.
Yeah, so this other, I can't remember the name of it, but the one that I was working on a pre-application for, I did the work on a pre-application and I sent it on to the Central Montageon Planning Commission for them to review, they're supposedly helping the town with that project. And then the flood happened, the July 10th flood. So they've been totally straight dealing with that. But the, the deadline for submitting it is now, instead of August 16th, it's now August 30th. So, yeah, so that pre-application will get submitted in time, and then who knows what will happen from there.
Was this, you just submitted an application and then, I can't, just refresh my memory. You didn't have a specific project in mind necessarily?
Yes, I did, I had a very specific project in mind. It's basically, um, it's for, to try to, again, work to eliminate flooding in Woodbury Village. It would be a hazard mitigation grant, which is a FEMA grant, which is the same thing that we did. That ended up, you know, it was for stream mitigation, but it ended up being getting rid of the old store. And Diana did a lot of work on that particular grant as a town clerk. But this would be to basically have engineers, stream people, take a look at the whole Buck Lake watershed. So water that runs out of Buck Lake along the ridge line.
Yeah, I remember, yeah.
And then it drops down into the village. To consider that as a whole, if we can get it past Route 14 into this beautiful floodplain area down here, over there, I guess, at this point, then maybe we can probably not totally eliminate flooding in the village, but... So it would be a very big project, it's like years in the making, it's not gonna happen right off. And the first step is a pre-application. So, you know, there'll be a lot of other towns, municipalities submitting pre-applications. And then they'll do a process of choosing which ones will get, go to the next stage, which will be an actual application. So that's, that's where, and so that's, will be submitted by the state, and maybe they'll push the date back for a little while.
Thanks, Sid.
But, so it's, it's like a whole, looking at the big picture, I think we've kind of looked at the parts and fixed parts and... But this would be taking into account the whole, the whole thing.
So I guess we still don't know whether those people in the yellow house are applying for a buyout.
I haven't heard one way or the other.
According, Paul has said, yes, they are, Paul's already, so, but I don't know.
That were to happen, seemed like you could, you know, make that end of the stream wider. Right now, it goes through the new, right, it goes through the new culvert and then it has to go...
Right.
Yeah, anyways, I don't know if that's why it backed up and went out of the other one or whatever.
Thanks for the refresher.
Yeah, thank you.
It's easy to get lost with all the different...
It is.
Possible places that we can flip. And it's probably, or actually, I'm not sure who's this for, the town office building flood repairs.
I just want to say to Robin that Steve Coro is coming Thursday.
Just coming Thursday?
Yeah.
Okay.
To look at the ductwork thing, I talked to him about it again today. But, I mean, you were there when he said that was the way to get more heat into that downstairs room. And, you know.
You said his name is Steve?
Steve Coro, yeah, K with a, with a O with a K. So Brandy is holding on to their bill. They did submit a bill. Work's not done, so. And I guess, the plywood that Skip was talking about, I guess that's something that the people will do when they're installing the cabinet or whatever on the backside.
I think they're gonna want that done before.
Do they want us to have it?
So maybe we may hang some sheet rock, we could ask them to hang a couple sheets of plywood too. And I will text him, I know he's right straight out, but I will bother him when we leave here.
But that's something I can do too.
Okay, so, yeah, I wasn't clear whether they're...
They can't do it, I think, just a second.
Okay, so thank you for working on the town hall RFP, I looked at it some more. I, I actually looked at it for probably 10 minutes today, and I sent a message to Pam to see if she would print it out for me because...
It's mind-numbing.
Yeah.
I didn't, yeah, sorry, I saw it come through, but I was like, can't look at this.
Yeah, and I did my best in the formatting, but that was a frustrating experience.
I bet.
Something else we might have to do in that little cubby where they're gonna put that sheet rock and the computer stuff is get that light working.
Oh, yeah. You mentioned that, or somebody else mentioned that, I don't know, maybe you...
Because I told you the other day, getting a, a different wreath to put on the door, and the light does not work.
Maybe Tim could do that.
I mean, I'm sure he could, yeah.
If he's not out straight.
I try to stay out of that conflict of interest, you know, so, but you know how to get hold of it, yeah.
Yeah, he did some other wiring down there, so.
Yeah.
So if we decide that that scope of work in RFP is okay, what is, what are the next steps? How does that go out, or how do we issue an RFP? Because it's unlikely we'll get it done this year, but it'd be nice to have somebody lined up for the spring or next year.
Yeah, I guess we have to do also a short version, go in an advertisement, and you see it.
I can work on that.
We see other towns doing that all the time, and I, sometimes I think to cut it out, sometimes I don't.
So you need a short version of the RFP?
I mean, I could just say, we're, this, we're, we're looking for...
Yeah, and you can, with the ad, you just let them know that there is an RFP, and if you're interested, then they'll contact the town, and you could send them the whole, the whole thing.
And that goes into a newspaper, we have places we have to put it, right?
I'll put it, I'll put it on the webpage, and...
Oh, yeah.
And if you go in Front Forge Forum and...
And so they can click on it and read it without having to come all the way to Woodbury.
Really? Oh.
Sounds good.
So, but they can't submit the, our...
Electronically, no.
Alright, so we need to approve bills, payroll orders, we already set the priority tax rate, which is good. And then we will adjourn when we're done with that stuff. Thank you, guys.
Have a good night, everybody.
Yeah, all of you, really appreciate all you do for the town.
This is the proposal from RB Technologies.
Oh, really? Okay.
And I left Michael with the summary of the costs, I think you have this.
Okay, if you guys want that, if you want.
And that's a good deal.
That's it?
Oh. This is all the coffee?
Thank you.
Here, Robin.
See ya. Maybe tomorrow?
They have a good reputation.
Tomorrow.
Do that for today?
Yes.
Okay, nobody jumped, I'm gonna slam this door.
Put that, put that in there with them.
I thought that already happened. This goes with this? Who wants to be in charge of it?
In charge of?
The proposal.
The proposal. I should be able to.
Oh, I'll keep it if you want.
Do you want to? Okay, I'm not.
I'll get a whole big bag of stuff for it.
I'll, I'll keep it, but you'll never see it again.
Skip didn't like it.
I think that's the...
Oh, this isn't, we don't, sorry.
I don't think so.
Sorry, I thought it was a payroll order.
So is Jerome still taking?
Yeah, we haven't adjourned yet.
I am, do you want to?
No.
Do we wanna just, can we just adjourn and say, like, we're gonna do this?
We can just say...
Ever, we already talked about this, I can't remember what we saw on them.
I don't know. What do other boards do, can you remind me, Jerome?
You know, things happen differently.
I mean, you go to someplace like Hardwick where they have a town manager and, and they have a town, you know, controller, and all their bills are paid and the town has to, the collectors have that much to do with it.
I have, I have filmed the signing of bills.
Yeah.
For Rochester, I think I've filmed it in Dallas sometimes.
Riveting television.
Sometimes they seem to do it in the middle of the meeting somehow, down the salary line.
Well...
On the other hand, I have to, I have to admit, my, my memory's a little easy on us.
It's not your most interesting thing?
Maybe because it's not the most interesting.
Maybe.
Well, we don't really actually make a motion, so we don't really take action other than to sign these bills, right?
Right, we just sign them.
Yeah, so I think we can adjourn the meeting and, and sign the bills.
I'm okay with that, somebody will tell us if not.
Yeah, so is there a motion to adjourn?
I'll make a motion to adjourn.
Any discussion? All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Motion is adjourned, uh, meeting is adjourned at 8:09.